Call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, June 17th, 2024, 5:30 PM. At this time, I would ask that you please silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions and out of respect for those speaking. Moving on to item number one on the agenda, that's roll call.
Burlingame?
Here.
Dancer?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Padraig Gula?
Here.
Ross?
Here. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the mayor's report, just a few items and actions that have taken place here since our last meeting. We did have a meeting through the Minnetonka Chamber EDC, a business roundtable discussion with Lieutenant Governor Tammy Miller that went really well. And I want to thank the Chamber, Chamber EDC for sponsoring that event. We had some good, solid business leaders in that gave Lieutenant Governor some ideas and directions on how, what we are doing here on Minnetonka. Also attended the Military Affairs, Chamber Military Affairs Committee meeting along with Military Appreciation Day at the park. They had it at Oak Park this year, so we had a great turnout for that, so I appreciate everybody who took part in that. Also spoke to a group of first sergeants on base last week, had a good discussion about things we're doing here in town and things, activities they're doing out on base in support of the airmen on base. One-on-one with the city manager, assistant city manager, and also attended a Flag Day event at Ryan GMC honoring the flag and also honoring those who served, served in our armed forces. This afternoon, we also, I also attended, along with a couple of the other city council members, attended Dr. Mark Volmer's retirement from the Minnetonka Public Schools after a distinguished career in education. So, thank you, Mark, and good luck on your next adventure, which I believe is going to involve a couple goats. And before moving on, I do want to thank, you know, the storm this weekend, I know we have Chief Klug and Chief Kelly here, want to thank our first responders for the work they did over the weekend, along with XL Energy, Verandria Electric, I heard we had a number of power lines down, and I want to thank them for their dedication to making our city as safe as it possibly can in a time of a storm like that. Finally, the final thing in my report is, as part of this year, we're kicking off our second, a group of us, Home for the Holidays event. We did start a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and this year, last year, we gave away, we gave away a Harley-Davidson to help send, we raffled it off, and the money went to buy airline tickets for sending our airmen home for the holidays to be with their families. Last year, we sent 115 airmen home, and this year, we're kicking off the raffle. Instead of a Harley, we've added two more wheels to it, so we've got a 2024 Chevy Trailblazer that we'll be raffling off. So, any, and the cool thing about it is, it's all paid for. So, every penny goes into supporting our airmen on the Minnetonka Air Force Base, and we hear it time and time again, and I think everybody up here on the dais will confirm this, that we have something special in Minnetonka. Not every community in the country has a relationship like we do with, with the airmen of the Minnetonka Air Force Base, and it's something we, we all, we cherish it, and it's, it goes much deeper than the economic development number that the base provides this community. It's, the men and women out there are on guard 24/7, 365, and they just, we need to show them our appreciation. So, any support you can give would be really appreciated. So, at this time, if there are no questions on the mayor's report, we'll move on. Seeing none, we will move on to the city manager's report. Harold?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, staff is pretty fully engaged right now in preparing the 2025 recommended budget, so that's taken up a significant amount of time. Also, I'd like to recognize the last regular council meeting of a few of our council members and the oncoming of three newly elected council members. And staff will be working diligently to help onboard the new council members and help that transition go as smoothly as possible. So, with that, I would stand for any questions with regards to the city manager report provided in the council agenda packet.
Are there any questions of our city manager? Seeing none, we will move on to item number five on the, on the agenda, that's the planning commission.
It was included in the, in the packet.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. The second council meeting of every month, we have asked the finance director to do a finance report and update to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I promise we'll keep this brief tonight. What we are trying to do with these series of presentations is to be a little bit informative and educational, and some of this information is very timely. As Mr. Stewart said, we're in the midst of working through the budget preparation. So, tonight, we're going to focus a little bit on enterprise funds we have in the city and some of the different sources of revenue. We'll work through this, we'll, the next step will go back to governmental funds, and then in a subsequent session, we'll talk about the expense side of the equation. So, this is a slide that I had in my last presentation that kind of broke out and differentiated between governmental funds and enterprise funds. And the main difference here is enterprise funds are things that the city does that operate like a business. So, as a result of that, we are required to account for them like a business, which means full accrual accounting. Like I said, today, we're going to focus on fund revenues, and we'll talk about some things that make this unique compared to regular businesses. So, for the, the enterprise funds across the board, generally, revenues come from user fees. They can include water, storm sewer, sewer, airport revenues, sanitation, tipping fees and collection fees, cemetery fees, parking revenues, special assessments that may be a result of those activities, and interest earnings as well. So, we'll just kind of go step by step through the major enterprise funds and talk about the different types of revenue. So, first up is airport. Obviously, we have terminal rent that we charge for the operators that operate out of the airport. That can include ground rent, as well as landing fees that are charged to the airlines that operate out of there. We have tea hangers that we rent, we have parking fees, permit fees, different security fees, and then we collect passenger facility charges for everyone that utilizes the airport, and then also customer facility charges. The airport does get some property taxes to help them with their operation, and then federal, state grants and interest and investment earnings, as well as some flowage fees on fuel that goes into the airplanes. Cemetery Fund is next on the list, also known as Rosehill Memorial Park. So, again, the major revenue source is there, lot sales, interment or burial fees, setting the monuments, new markers and base setting fees. Something that was added a number of years ago was the Cullum Barium, where it's an above-ground storage, for lack of a better term, vault for cremains, and those niches are sold for folks that prefer that type of interment. Also, some winter storage fees for when the burials can't be completed over the winter months. And cemetery does get some property taxes, and again, interest and investment earnings. Parking Authority Fund, this is a small fund that are, that operates some parking lots in the city downtown, and they collect some rental fees for those lots. Sanitation Fund is comprised of the residential collection, recycling, as well as the tipping fees at the landfill. So, again, fees for services, deliver roll-off containers and collect those, the tipping fees at the gate, tire disposal fees. We have some land that is rented out that hasn't been developed for future expansion yet at the landfill, and then the recycling fees, as well as interest and investment earnings. Water, sewer, storm sewer, more of the same, again, user fees, meter charges, bulk water, federal and state grants, connection fees, different septic disposal fees, interest and investment earnings. Parking ramps, parking pass fees, tenant rent, we have some space that's being currently rented out, and interest and investment earnings. So, before we go into the questions, I want to point out some of the things that make this a little bit unique and why we wanted to spend just a couple of minutes going over this. Enterprise funds, like I said earlier, we're required to account for them like a business, so full accrual accounting. But, we budget based on cash coming in and cash going out. So, there's a little bit of a discrepancy between how we budget for these funds and then how we report on these funds at the end of the year. So, that can create a little bit of confusion when we go through things. And as we get further into these sessions, we'll start talking about the reporting, the annual comprehensive financial report, and there's a schedule in there that walks us through the reconciliation process we have to go through with governmental funds to bring them up to full account, full accrual basis to present in our financial statements. So, some differences between budget and actual, but we just wanted to talk really quickly at a high level, especially since we're moving into this budget process right now. And next time, we'll talk a little bit about the governmental funds and the revenue streams, and some of the challenges we have there, too. So, I would open it up for any questions you might have.
Are there any questions of Dave? Seeing none? You're good. Thanks, Dave. Okay, moving on to item number five on the agenda, that's the Planning Commission. Planning Commission met, however, they had no actionable items for the council to take action on. So, item number five is just kind of an FYI, there are the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting if you wish, or you most likely have already reviewed them. So, that'll take us on to item number six, and that's our consent agenda. We have 20 items on our consent agenda this evening. We have been asked to pull three items by Councilman Padraig Gula. Those items are 6.9, 6.17, and 6.19. So, are there any other items that need to be pulled? Any items? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval on the remaining items.
We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Please call the roll. Or do we vote?
I'll call the roll, just because Alderman Padraig Gula isn't joined in, but we'll start with Pitner.
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Item is passed.
Item is passed. Moving on to the first item that has been asked to be pulled, that is item 6.9, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Paul. Councilman Padraig Gula, you were asked to, you asked to pull this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to draw people's attention to a progressive employment policy that the city is hopefully going to be adopting. It was a very thorough, I attended the Civil Service Commission meeting and sat in on discussions and reviewed the proposed policy in detail, and it seems like a very enlightened and a very good one. It may also even help with recruiting, but it certainly, I think, would help achieve a better work-life balance for people and make our work more attractive. The thing that really drew my attention on this one was that prior to undertaking any telework employment arrangement, that both the employee and the supervisor need to undergo training, and hopefully we'll have common understanding of what policy involves and what's expected out of each. And I think that's a particularly important thing. The research I'm familiar with suggests that if people have shared expectations and their reasonable expectations about working from home or teleworking, that the arrangements are much more likely to work out. So, I think that's a very positive aspect of it, and I think the whole policy is a good development, and pleased to see our, our Civil Service Commission and our HR staff move in that direction.
Any other comments? No comments, seeing no comments, please call the roll.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 6.17, Accounts Receivable Policy, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll move that.
Move approval by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, and once again, Dr. Padraig Gula, you were asked to pull this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was distressed by what I saw here in terms of the accounts receivable policy, and I'll be proposing an amended policy instead. I think it's good that the city is systematizing and formalizing some of these arrangements, but I don't see the policies being nearly strict enough, and I think that's something that both staff need to monitor and also the council. I'm concerned about several parts of it, for example, that council notification is, in my opinion, not adequate, that we need earlier and more aggressive follow-up with people who owe the city money, that we're letting too much time elapse before taking any action on people who owe us money, that we're not imposing the cost of us following up on people. You know, if I'm a few days late paying my credit card, they sock me $39, and there's no provision for that at all, any kind of late payment fee in this proposed policy. I like the idea of some interest, but again, I think it costs us more than, than we make in terms of interest to follow up on people. And I'm particularly concerned that council approval is not required for any significant write-offs. Now, if you'll let me tell a little account of why I'm so concerned about this, several years ago, a situation I stumbled upon made me very concerned about the amount of money that was owed to the city and what I felt was inadequate follow-up. I want to emphasize this was not under the current administration, this was not under the current city manager or the current finance director. And the problem was that the council really wasn't informed about what was going on, and that has been a perennial complaint of mine since I first started serving on the council in 1998, on and off. The council has often played a role, in my opinion, of being a rubber stamp, and has not been aggressive enough in monitoring things. We've not been informed of things I think we should have been informed about, and I think sometimes things have really been kept from us, it's my own personal opinion. So, I think it's very important that we exercise diligent oversight. The particular situation that I stumbled upon by accident, because, you know, we weren't informed about it, was that large amounts were owed to our sanitation program, and at one point, I think we had $250,000 that was owed to the city. One individual in particular owed at one point over $230,000. If they had gone out of business, the taxpayers would have been screwed, and the city would have been in significant financial difficulty in terms of that account. That information never was conveyed to us. So, people were allowed to build up large accounts without any interest charges or anything like that, and there's a significant risk of loss to the city. I was just appalled when I saw this, and I wanted to get some context on it, so I spent an afternoon calling around other cities in the state, and as soon as I explained what I was facing, people started laughing. We clearly had the most lenient policy of all. One city told me that, interesting story of an operator, a truck operator, drove out to their landfill and wanted to use the landfill, and they turned him away because I think something like $8,000 was owed, and he got very angry and called his boss, and his boss ended up talking with the city staffer, and they were told basically, "Look, we're not going to let you dump anymore, you don't care if your truck is at the front door until you pay your bill." And sure enough, he paid his bill and was able to use those services. So, that one incident left a very unpleasant taste in my mouth. I think it's incumbent upon us as the ultimate stewards of the city and the taxpayers' funds to be more aggressive in monitoring these and in taking action. So, what I will ask is for us to amend this proposed policy in five ways. First, I would ask that we make contact on people who owe more, whose accounts are more than 30 days overdue at that point, rather than waiting 60 or 90 days. I think any businessman, no matter how big or small, knows the longer you let an uncollected debt go on, the less the odds of you collecting on it. So, I think 30 days should be the standard follow-up. The second thing I would propose is we alter the resolution to require all departments to advise the finance department of any accounts that are over 30 days overdue. The third amendation I would propose is that we institute late payment fees. This is an almost universal practice in the business world, and I think this is one of the respects in which the city should be run as a business. The fourth thing I would suggest is that we require the council to be advised of any accounts that are over $500 that are overdue. And the fifth thing is that we require council approval for any write-off of funds over $500. And I guess the sixth thing should be that the council be advised of any, any significant overdue accounts on a monthly basis, not quarterly. Again, I think that would reflect wise financial stewardship and assure the citizens that people are paying their fair share and that we aren't taking unnecessary chances. So, I would propose those amendments to the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Lisa. Further discussion?
And I like all of the ideas that Alderman Padraig Gula has presented. Just for me, I need to see this in front of us so that I can read through it completely. So, I don't know, you know, is this, is this something that'll be on two readings or not? Probably not. No, no. So, we would be accepting it tonight without being able to view it, that's my only concern. But I like all the ideas that he has shared.
Paul?
Again, I appreciate and I respect the, the ideas, and I think they're good ideas. I would look to maybe get provided some, some background if these are attainable or if they are, you know, enforceable from city staff. So, I don't know if I can vote on it tonight and support it, but I would, I would, I would absolutely support this being brought back to the council with some, some input from staff unless that input has already been sought out. And I look to Alderman Padraig Gula if you've run by this by the finance director or city manager to this point.
No, Paul, I didn't, I'm sorry, I was preoccupied with other things.
No.
And I normally would, and I apologize to city staff for not doing that, I normally wouldn't run anything significant by them. But I think in a sense, it's irrelevant, because I think this, this is on us, this is not on them. They carry out our directives, and I think one of the directives, which is made even more clear in this latest election, is we need to be more financially accountable. I don't think this imposes any burden on them, and if it does, I would expect them to do that as part of their normal work. I apologize, I probably should have run it by them, but this is a, this is a significant issue, and I think, you know, we need to set the direction on that and not pass it on to somebody else. And I would leave it up to them to, you know, to devise the computer programs and the reporting mechanism and stuff, I just want us to be told or the council to be told of what's happening, that's all.
Do you want to have staff input? Dave, do you want to speak to any of this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my team did spend quite a bit of time putting this together, and I'm not going to say it's perfect, but it's, we tightened up the process considerably from what the current policy is. Some of the things that Alderman Padraig Gula pointed out, as a result of this issue years ago, I think I was just coming on in the middle of that when we implemented the finance charges, and we do assess finance charges for accounts that are past due more than 30 days currently. This is more going through our internal process of whose responsibility it is to follow up on these accounts as well, because we have a number of departments throughout the city that have accounts, and they're the ones that are dealing with these customers and, you know, have, set up the accounts to deal with these customers and have the information on the front side. So, one of the things we're looking at is the, formalizing the process of how we set up an account, the process we go through before we extend credit to anyone, and then also the process we do to follow up if they don't pay the bill, and, and who is responsible for each step of the way. So, there are a couple of things that I can address, too. The write-off issue, that is something that we landed on, we had to come up with something that we could put in there that is clear and easily defined in the policy of who has what authority. And there can be cases where a write-off is processed because something was done incorrectly. So, we wanted to have the flexibility to handle things like that, if something was wrong or incorrect. or incorrect or incomplete, that we could resolve that without going through to the city council. But we also wanted to be aware or cognizant that if there is a significant write-off, that the council is aware of that and it is transparent. And typically, when we have something like that, the council is going to be aware, because there's going to be some other type of action that's pending as a result, maybe court action, those types of things, too.
Steph.
Mayor and Finance Director Lakefield, so my understanding is that the municipal court accounts receivable for fines and fees would also fall underneath this policy, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And so just for a point of clarification for you, Alderman Padraig Gula and you, Alderwoman Olson, so the accounts receivable for municipal court is oftentimes going to include all those fines and fees that are ordered for the clientele that moves through that particular process. So if somebody's ordered to pay $200, a $200 fine and a $25 fee for a petty theft charge or something of that nature, do you also want that to be accruing with interest in the same manner as all of the other city accounts receivables? Oftentimes, that can lead to a debt that is oftentimes a struggle for that clientele to meet.
Right.
To just grow and grow and grow.
I think you raise a very good point. Having sat through many sessions of municipal court, my heart goes out to some of the people, and they don't have the money. I mean, it's really obvious. I think the council needs to be aware of that, and I think also the public for the sake of transparency. The reality is we're going to run off those amounts, but I think the council really should be in the position of approving any loss to the city of over $500, and I think it'd only be a courtesy to us to be informed. And I should mention, too, Dave, and I apologize again for not running this by earlier, I think that the policy as a whole is a very good idea. I'm just asking for it to be tightened up in the respect of earlier notification of the council and also more aggressive follow-up on people who owe money. The rest of it, I think, is excellent, and I guess I should have prefaced my, my remarks by saying that. I think this is a significant improvement, but I think those two areas really do need to be tightened up. But yeah, I, I think if you owe municipal court, you know, that should be a matter of public record, and I think after a certain point, the council should know. Maybe there are steps we need to take, maybe, for example, we need to be more aggressive with funding social service programs to keep people out of court and keep people away from doing illegal things so they don't have to end up paying fines. I mean, I think that'll be a valuable kind of measure of what's going on in our community if we know. You know, that could very well identify, you know, areas that we're not familiar with or, you know, maybe particular individuals. I know there's sometimes stores that I go to that has a list by the cash register of, you know, "Don't, don't, don't do business with these people," or "Don't," whatever. You know, we're a public entity, and I, I think it's fair that the public have noticed if there are certain individuals who habitually, for whatever reason, don't pay, and maybe they can't pay. You know, I, I think that's, that's, that's only fair. It's what businesses do privately. When I took some recycling into the commercial recycling yard a month or so ago, there's a list by the cash register of, you know, these people basically are deadbeats. I'm not sure if I'd use that expression for our citizens, but yeah, I think, I think it should be for all accounts. You know, I would be more, more lenient, if you will, with some of the municipal court ones, but I think it still should be a matter of, of record and should be discussed and should be seen by everyone or available to be seen by everyone.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to clarify a little bit, we don't have all of the detailed information for customers of municipal court that are, that owe money. That information comes to us once a month from municipal court. They are the ones that handle receivables for the fines and restitution, those types of things. So we don't have that detail in finance to be able to process late fees on that. And then that's a court, court-imposed sentence, so I don't know if other municipalities do that or not. And then the likelihood of collection on some of that is highly doubtful to start with.
I understand. If it'd make you feel more comfortable, if it'd make life easier at this point, I'd be willing to exempt the juvenile, juvenile, the municipal court fees from that if it makes life easier.
Does the second agree with that proposal?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is, that currently sits on the floor, as I understand, is to approve the policy with the direction as outlined by Alderman Padraig Gula. Is that right? Is that what you have, Michaela?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for, since we have Mr. Lakefield up at the podium?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask for just one more bit of clarification, does that mean that it would require council action before any write-offs are done? Is that the proposal?
Over $500.
Over $100?
$500.
$500.
Yeah, I don't want to clutter up our agenda or make life harder for you and, and your staff, but money's money. I mean, if we have to approve animal exhibit licenses, which I think are trivial and cost, what, 25 bucks? If someone owes the citizens, it's basically what it is, not, not, not you or me personally, it's the citizens are owed. I think we should be in the loop on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Lisa.
I guess I'll just repeat my concern that I would like to see this more clearly before I feel ready to vote on it, and with that, I would make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this until our first meeting in July. Any further discussion? Or is a motion to table debatable? It is, okay. Steve.
I feel strongly that we need to proceed with this, but I'm not going to object to tabling, particularly since we have a new crop of alderpeople coming who have promised us much greater accountability. I, I think the three of them at least will be, will be beating the drums on this and making sure that it passes. And I think it's a significant enough issue where there's been enough public attention now where it'd be very difficult for the council not to pass it. I have no problem, and again, I apologize for not sharing this with the finance department earlier, but let's see, I became aware of this on the 14th. You know, when we get agenda items on Thursday, it's kind of hard to finalize everything by the next, by the following Monday. So I sympathize, you know, it would be nice to have it in writing, and I'm, I guess I'm okay with that, I'm not going to fight it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. The motion is to table, table 6.17 until July 1st.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitner.
Yes.
Padraig Gula.
No.
Ross.
Yes.
Burlingame.
No.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item 6.19 on the consent agenda, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Paul to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, and once again, Steve, you are, you asked to have this pulled, so I'll turn the mic.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure we had a chance to talk about this. The police department in particular has been faced with lots of recruiting difficulties, and I think looking at hiring bonuses makes sense. I really struggle with the idea of treating one group of employees in a different fashion than another group. I think you can justify that for people who are in the public safety field, given their hours and the risks they face. And I think particularly with the police department, given the great difficulty they have had in recruitment, I think it's a good step, but I think it, we need to look more carefully at other steps to make it easier. One of the things I've noted on, noted before and mentioned is that family health insurance benefits really put us at a disadvantage in terms of hiring. I would like to see more personal involvement by police department leadership. I know it's a national problem, but, you know, I think we need to reach out further to educational institutions. I think we need to kind of think beyond the box, if you will, and, and not just recruit for people in the public safety field like security forces at the airbase or graduates of criminal justice programs. I think there are people from other educational backgrounds, particularly social work, for example, and psychology that I think would be good candidates, and I think we should exploit those pools. I think we also need to look at some other parts of the policy or the options that we have now in terms of tuition reimbursement and paying off student loans. State law has, has become much more generous to us in what we can do, and I think we need to have, if you will, a full court procedure, as a sports analogy, to, to recruit. I think this, again, is a good first step, but I'd like us to even be more assertive in, in trying to recruit in the public safety field.
Any further discussion? Harold.
Just want to remind the council and the public that the funds for this come directly from the state legislature this last legislative session, and it came with specific restrictions on what it could be used for, specifically for recruiting police department members. That includes even potentially opening it up to other city staff receiving these bonuses for encouraging people to apply to be hired on the police department. It was very specific that it only goes to police department members and those kinds of things, and I believe the chief's policy is trying to take a, a second attempt at trying to put this money to work to the benefit of our department, when our first round wasn't as successful as we hoped it would be. And I think that his recommendations also keep us within the bounds of the, the restrictions that the state legislature placed on this funding, and so I would encourage council to consider approval here.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pitner.
Yes.
Padraig Gula.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Burlingame.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item number seven on the agenda, that is our action item 7.1, the public hearing on the demolition of a dangerous building located at 511 Seventh Street Northeast. And now is the opportunity for those who wish to speak either in favor of or against this proposal to step forward. Second call for anybody who wishes to speak in favor of or against. Steph.
So I'm just going to make a point of clarification here. So the recommended action under I to direct city staff to collect three bids and to select the best and most cost-effective bid. The direction would be to collect three bids to demolish the property, and that's contrary to the language that is in section three, paragraph C. It mentions if the city desires to address the dangerous building, city staff will plan to reach out to its abatement contractor, Hanson Excavating, and make arrangements to demolish the property. So the direction would be to receive bids, it wouldn't be as indicated further down in the memo that we would contact Hanson Excavating, who has our abatement contract for nuisance abatements. We would prepare specs for bid, and we would advertise those, and people would have the opportunity to bid on that demolition for this specific property.
Okay. Any further comment? Mark.
Question maybe for the city attorney, are we, are we unable to use the already contracted demolition contractor for something like this?
So underneath section, let me check it here. Section 19914B, it talks about the city soliciting bids for the required remedial work or demolition in a manner reasonably designed to produce a fair contract and full competition amongst prospective bidders. So the ordinance that concerns demolishing dangerous, dangerous buildings specifically talks about soliciting bids for the specific demolition, so.
Okay.
And then we would give notice before the award of contract to the property owner, so he would have an opportunity to come in and contest whether or not that was the best and lowest bid for the demolish of the property, because ultimately, the cost of that is going to be assessed against the property owner's property.
Thank you. Anything else? Steve.
Comments about the, or are we done with the hearing then, and are you opening to comments?
I, I, I'm about ready to.
Okay.
He would, I would go to what are the wishes of the council. Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the demolition as recommended.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Discussion. Steve.
Yeah, I, I drove by this property yesterday, and I was really appalled. First of all, my hearts go out, my heart, hearts, I wish I had hearts. My heart goes out to the owner of the property, the people who were displaced from their home by not just one, but two fires. But I was also very concerned about the impact this has on the safety of the community. It was an obvious hazard to anyone walking by and the negative impact upon the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's not a neighborhood full of, you know, affluent people with, you know, beautiful homes, but they deserve not to have something like this next to them. And one of my hopes for the next council is that they look more carefully at establishing and enforcing codes that make it less likely for properties like this to stay in a state of disrepair. I note that the first notice of violation was July of 2022, which is two years ago. And not only was there one fire, but two fires. I think the dilapidated state of the property might have played a role in the second fire, maybe not. But, you know, if you look at the pictures that are in our agenda packet, this really is just an awful thing to have in our community. When I was campaigning and going door-to-door through the neighborhoods recently, I ran across perhaps half a dozen or a dozen properties that were not in as quite bad a shape, but were in, in really dilapidated condition. And I know we operate on a complaint-only basis, but I think if we want to beautify this community and make it a more desirable place for people to live and stay, I think we need to look seriously, more seriously at properties that have been neglected. It really does diminish the value of neighboring properties in our, I think, our entire community. The city set up a few years ago, so-called, or not so-called, but a problem properties committee, where representatives of different city departments would get together and try to identify and then address some of these. I, I think that process, from my perspective, is a good one, it gives a good start, but needs to be accelerated. When, when you go particularly neighborhoods you're not familiar with and you see some of the properties we have, it's really quite sad, and I think that feeds into some of the things Scott has been talking about in terms of homelessness and disadvantaged people and also carry. But I think this is a real issue. If you systematically explore the city, you'll find places that really people shouldn't be living and they need alternatives. There was one house, for example, on 16th Street, that's, that's quite public, a car, drunk driver, allegedly drunk driver ran into it a month or so ago, and the whole front of the house is missing. One of the neighbors asked me how long it would stay in such a state, and I really didn't have an answer. I mean, we want to respect people's private property rights, we want to give them time to recover from a disaster or accident, but if you have the half of, front half of your house missing, I don't think that's doing anybody any favors to allow that to persist indefinitely. So I would certainly support us demolishing this house and encourage us to be more aggressive when it comes to very substandard and unsafe buildings.
Mark.
I would just note that, along with what Alderman and Padraig Gula pointed out, I, I've been getting complaints from neighbors next to this for many months, probably over a year, because of, of what has been going on there and, and the disrepair, the multiple fires. It, it, it may be an unfortunate situation, but I think this is one where we need to act. So I'm, I'm supporting this.
Anything further? We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitner.
Yes.
Padraig Gula.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Burlingame.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item 7.2 on the agenda, final subdivision plan to be known as Forest Acres, second addition to the city of Minnet. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Lisa, is there any discussion? Harold.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this item and 7.3 are both very similar, and I had the agenda put together to put this under action items as opposed to under consent agenda, because there's been some recent public conversation about the city's process and how we handle this, and I'd like to ask Mr. Sorensen to come up and talk about how we go through this process. These are both related to the flood properties. These are properties that we acquired months ago, if not years ago, and now that the flood project's been completed in here, we're coming through and cleaning up and, and replating these and those kinds of things, and I thought it'd be a good, a public opportunity for the city to provide some education to the public of how we go through this process and why.
Sure. Thank you, city manager. Mr. Mayor, members of council, so as city manager said, these are properties that we've purchased probably years ago. This would be part of flood control projects MI 2 and 3, so from the 83 bypass over to east of 16th Street. So when we, we buy those properties based on like a preliminary design of where our flood control would go, so we don't know exactly where all these features will end up, so in this case, we, we buy the properties, we build our flood control project, and then once we have, you know, final locations of everything, then what we end up with is a lot of, you know, small parcels that are unbuildable and things that we need to keep in a clear zone next to the, next to the levee. So these two plats are basically just cleaning up all those small remaining parcels, creating, creating blocks of publicly zoned property that will remain owned by the city of Minnet.
Just a final comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and that is I appreciate staff going through this process. There's been communities that I've been in that would just...
There's been communities that have been in that would just leave it the way it is now, knowing that the city owns it. And until such time as it changed possession, which was unlikely to ever happen, just kind of left these situations out there hanging, being left on the permanent record as being subdivided in smaller lots and those kinds of things. So I appreciate staff taking the time to come back after we're done and cleaning all this up and making sure that it's clear for future councils and administrations going forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would just add to what the city manager said. So there are remnants of the previous flood control project from the seventies and eighties where there were, you know, housing developments that were bought out and the channelization project took place. We have places where there's some of these weird shaped, they're shaped like the river, but there's land on all sides of them. So it's places where the old channel used to be and things of that nature. So this was a kind of, that was a learning lesson for us. We didn't want to send that to future generations of public works directors and engineers to deal with, so.
Any questions of Jason before he left too late? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pitner.
Yes.
Roger Gula.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Burlingame.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item 7.3, final subdivision plat to be known as Napa Valley, twentieth addition to the city of Minnet. What are the wishes of the council? Move approval. We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pitner.
Yes.
Roger Gula.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Burlingame.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 7.4 on the agenda, carbon dioxide storage facility. What are the wishes of the council? I move approval. We have a motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitner.
Yes.
Roger Gula.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Burlingame.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item 7.5 on the agenda, the Knockback Tavern Executive Session Recordings and Records. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we release the March eighteenth and any other executive session recordings that concern the city's purchase of the Knockback Tavern. And as well as move to release any records to include documents, memos, emails regarding Knockback Tavern purchase that were provided to the city council prior or during March eighteenth, fifteenth, May sixth, and any other executive sessions held to negotiate the Knockback Tavern purchase.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Steph.
So Mayor, members of the council, I had a discussion with the requestor, Mr. Wolsky, prior to the meeting, and I believe he wants to provide some clarification for part two of his specific request. We've been corresponding back and forth through Next Request, which is the city's open records request software. And my understanding is we've, we're now on the same page as to what you're requesting in regards to the second paragraph.
Mayor Ross, council members, Ms. Stahlheim, thank you for that recognition. With regards to the second item on this request, the practice of using the generic agenda item for executive sessions has left a void in understanding what may or may not have been discussed at these meetings. So the second request is related to all potential parcels that were discussed at any of these meetings, and the records in particular that were provided to council in the lead up or during those meetings. What I want to exclude specifically, though, is any portions of those records or records that deal specifically with negotiating strategies of ongoing negotiations. So any potential unnamed parcels where there may be ongoing negotiations, I am not interested in seeing or having released the negotiating strategy. What I'm very interested in seeing is the what parcels may be subject to ongoing negotiations and the why, the why part of the equation, why the city may be interested in purchasing these parcels. So I wanted to provide that, those exceptions and clarifications to the requested release. I would also suggest that if there are any partial portions of documents, I would be happy to see redactions in them if they are directly related to negotiating strategy.
Okay.
If that provides clarity.
And so Mayor, in regards to this particular request, my understanding is staff is still compiling records that are responsive to this request. So as Mr. Wolsky mentioned, if there's any background information that was provided to the council prior to these executive sessions, we're still compiling those documents and reviewing them to see if there's any confidential information. So as far as the council's decision here tonight, I just want to note that, so North Dakota Century Code, section forty-four oh four, nineteen point one, subsection nine, states that a governing body can hold an executive session to discuss negotiating strategy or provide negotiating instructions to its attorney or other negotiators regarding pending contracts that are currently being negotiated or for which negotiation is reasonably likely to occur in the immediate future. An executive session may be held under this subsection only when an open meeting would have an adverse fiscal effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public entity. A record revealing the negotiating strategy or instruction under this section is considered exempt, which means it's in the discretion of the public entity as to whether or not it wants to release that record. And drafts of contracts or agreements subject to negotiations are also exempt, but only for so long as released would have an adverse fiscal impact on the public entity unless the records are otherwise exempt or confidential. So the decision to enter into executive sessions underneath that banner of a potential property purchase does not reveal the description of the property that the council is discussing. But it's up to the council's discretion on whether or not it wants to keep that particular information exempt. So I can entertain any questions on that general concept if the council likes, but the reason why we're bringing this particular decision before you is so we can receive your input on whether or not you want to retain any of the exempt records or if you want to release those exempt records. As you'll remember, before we proceeded into those executive sessions for discussions on potential land purchases, we did hold a council vote. And at that time, it was unanimous that we would proceed into executive session to discuss those particular matters. So we want to make sure we're presenting this to the council so that it also has the discretion on whether or not it wants to release that information rather than have city staff release it. And again, we haven't gathered all of that information yet, but we'll take the council's direction into consideration as we review and receive those records from staff.
Any other questions of Steph? Steve.
Just to be sure, you feel that this adequately protects any ongoing or future negotiations? This doesn't, I mean, give you what Josh has said, and we're clear that that's not going to advantage any of the other parties we might be negotiating with.
So, I mean, the concern is, is it going to have an adverse fiscal impact? And the property price increasing because of this disclosure could be considered an adverse fiscal impact. Whether or not that would happen is something that I don't know. We don't know what the future would hold. But most people in this room have probably negotiated a property purchase, and we're not all necessarily privy to who the people are that you're negotiating against. And oftentimes, there are situations where there's purchases that are negotiated between two parties. A third party may come in and decide that they want to enter those negotiations as well, and it could result in that particular purchase price going up. Mr. Wolsky, as I understand it, your primarily, your primary concern is not the negotiating terms or conditions, it's you want to know what properties the city is discussing in these executive sessions. Is that, have I boiled that down accurately?
Ms. Stahlheim, yes, I think that's an accurate element or component of it. It's also very much tied to the larger transparency that we, the public, effectually experienced as a result of these recent executive session practices. Case in point, May sixth, when the public became fully aware that the Knockback Tavern was under consideration for purchase, and the action that took place approximately three minutes later to essentially enter into contract for that purchase allowed the public three minutes' notice when the property became parcel and when the city took action. And I would suggest simply as a citizen standing here, that that level of transparency and notification is not acceptable. So I am now interested in seeing what other parcels we may be negotiating on under similar circumstances, because I think it's in the public's interest to know if the city is negotiating, at the very least, on parcels one way or another.
Steve.
I could ask Josh, are you also interested in knowing why we're interested in these properties?
Alderman Padrigula, absolutely. I think that is an important part of the public record, and that is specifically related to the Knockback Tavern. What I have been most interested in discovering is because in the documents made available to the public, there is just, very frankly, not very much information regarding the justification for that acquisition and subsequent demolition because of the manner in which these processes unfolded.
Former Alderman Wolsky, I think in some ways, the question of why is even more important.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Padrigula, I would agree, especially in this situation, particularly where the cost to acquire and demolish is in some cases considerably higher than the cost would have been to leave the parcel in place, where it can continue to serve the community as it has for now one hundred and fourteen years.
Or maybe there's a persuasive argument to be made for us demolishing the property, buying it, demolishing it, and putting in a dike or something like that that would serve everybody for a long time also.
I think seeing that information would be very helpful for at least this individual standing at the podium.
I agree with you.
If I may, well, I understand the desire for transparency. What we're trying to balance here is transparency, but also the cost that the taxpayers have to pay for acquisition of property. And I believe that there's very few things that the city has given authority by the state legislature to go into closed session and discuss outside of the knowledge of the public. And this is one of them, as the city attorney just described. My concern is, is if we put out there that the city's even interested in purchasing a property before we do, and if they know the why we need it, and they know that we have to have it, no matter the price, the price goes up, which comes out of the pockets of the taxpayers. So instead of paying one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a piece of property because they know the city has to have it, the taxpayers may pay three hundred thousand dollars for that piece of property. And I think that's what the state legislature has protected for city councils, to be able to go into a closed session and discuss this, because there is a potential adverse effect to the taxpayers if this is known early in the process out there and is open to the public for discussion. So I don't have a problem with transparency after, if the council wants to release the issues on the Knockback Tavern, and that has been completed. There is no adverse effect to the city more because we've purchased the property. But I would urge caution of inserting a lot of transparency here in the beginning because there is a substantial potential of adverse effect to the taxpayers in the prices that we pay for property, simply once it's known out there that the city's interested in purchasing property, and particularly in those situations where the city may have no choice in that situation.
Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I guess my position is that I'm fine with relieving, with releasing the information on the Knockback Tavern, because that's a done deal. I'm not comfortable releasing anything beyond that. My position is the same as it was last time, which was, there's an active state's attorney inquiry into this. Mr. Wolsky has stated in writing that there seems to be some kind of vagueness or question about the law here. Let's let the state's attorney decide that, and then we can go forward as directed.
Steph.
And Alderman Janser, I think you're referring to the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, Attorney General.
And that, the state's attorney's office is not involved in this particular transaction. And that's, just wanted to clarify that it's the Attorney General that will be looking into this matter further. And I've spoken with the Assistant Attorney General that holds the portfolio for the open records, open meetings matter. My understanding is they have some busyness happening in their office as well, so we haven't received the letter requesting more information, but we have preliminarily released what we do have that's relevant to Mr. Wolsky's request for them to review and so that they can begin that particular process. I would also note just for the council and the public's consideration that even though the negotiations are held under that umbrella item of a potential property purchase, the final action is always in a public meeting. So it's, the deal isn't finalized, the public can always attend that meeting and be present when the council takes any action after these executive sessions. So the decisions for the instance here with the Knockback, that's all done in a public session following the executive session, and the negotiating terms are all set forth, and the public is welcome and open to attend those meetings.
Steve, a couple of questions. First of all, I think, I don't want to make Josh's case for him, but I think there's a difference between attending and observing, which I think is absolutely critical, and having any meaningful input. I mean, in this last council election, a big deal was made of the council not listening. While if you have just a few minutes to be informed something has happened, I don't know that you can provide any input. And I think citizens being able to provide input is very important to the process. So that's one point. Yeah, it is open. The only consequence, I think, can be an electoral political consequence later, people can be criticized for what they did, but there's no meaningful opportunity for citizen input, which is a concern of mine. Whether I'll go and vote for it or not, I'm not sure yet. I need to think that through. But the second question I have is the motion before us, is that just limited to TikTok or is it a broader motion?
Knockback.
Knockback is what you refer to.
Whatever, some, something that people go to drink.
It would, so that would cover all, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh. So Josh is requesting to have all of the preliminary records released that were forwarded to the council before any meeting where a potential land purchase was discussed. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. If it would make the council more comfortable, I think what I have heard tonight via the conversations, the city manager's comments, is in effect what I've been wondering about, which is, is there another parcel that the city is actively negotiating on? And I would think that I have the answer to that. So if the council is comfortable amending the motion or reviewing the actions, what I'm most interested, I would say at this point, in allowing you all to advance on something that you may be able to support, is records related to the Knockback Tavern. And my presumption will be that any future actions on an unknown parcel will be a part of a future agenda at some point that I will be watching as any member of the public can. So if that helps the council in some form, I would gladly, at this point, remove the request for documents related to anything besides the Knockback Tavern. I would still request documents related to the Knockback Tavern provided to the council.
And I think that's the motion that's on the floor, and it's in alignment with our original description of the request in the memo. Is that accurate?
I would agree, Steph. Yes, that's accurate.
Okay.
So just clarification, we're just dealing with the transaction of the Knockback Tavern.
Yes.
Exclusively.
Exclusively.
Not future ones, not ones that go back, just the Knockback.
That's how I understand it.
Thank you. Haley, you had?
Well, we cleared it up.
Okay.
We're good.
Any further discussion?
If I could follow up with the city attorney. The city manager said this would, if all the records were open, and Josh is saying he doesn't want that, that we would be inhibited in buying property that we needed. And I guess I'm wondering about this issue of needing versus wanting property. If we need a piece of property, can we not resort to eminent domain at some point, or what are the limits on that? Because I'm not comfortable with this notion, respectfully, Harold, of us needing something. You know, maybe we would, maybe we wouldn't, but it seems to me in most cases, we want something.
And Mayor Alderman Padrigula, with all property negotiations, the city's not going to immediately resort to eminent domain. There's always going to be a preliminary negotiation that occurs first to see if we can't amicably receive, reach some kind of a resolution. And there is an analysis that the court does before it will even allow the cities to commence eminent domain actions, and typically it's because it's something that's critically needed for city services that are being administered. such as utilities, infrastructure, some kind of public service that's going to be administered. If it's the city just wants to buy a piece of property to place the city attorney's office on, like, that wouldn't be something that you would be able to commence an eminent domain action on. It would have to be something that is related to the better public good, related to a public service that the city is providing for its citizens.
I ask about that, is that we're going to probably be, the council will probably be facing some major decisions regarding structures. We've already had a proposal to build a new police station, very expensive project. There is consideration for a new fire station to protect people at the southeast end of town. A significant purchase coming, or decision coming up regarding a purchase. And, you know, I certainly don't want to make the taxpayers pay more for property because, you know, we show our interest to a developer or realtor in a particular piece of property. So I'm concerned about that. I don't want to disadvantage us. On the other hand, I think Josh has a point, is that people need to know what we're thinking about and what our rough plans are. I also remember discussions regarding the current fire department headquarters with several, Fire Chief Pryor. And I was quite actively involved in that process of looking. And, you know, I asked him, is this the best location? And he and I had some pretty spirited discussions about it. And he said, quote, "It's the best available location." And we were stuck because of market pressures and forces and other issues with this particular location. It wasn't ideal, it wasn't, I think, really what he wanted, but it was the best we could do at the time. And I guess I'm wondering as to how much, how flexible that barrier is between us wanting something and us really being able to get it if we need it. That's all. I think I have a better sense in listening to you. You know, if it's just we wanted this particular piece of property, you know, it sounds like you're saying that that's not good enough. We have to be competitively negotiating about it. But if it's something that's really critical, then we have some more leeway. I mean, this is always, I think, a balancing act between people's right to know and the right to influence our process and our ability to get the best deal for the citizens and meet our administrative goals and objectives and plans. So thank you. I feel more comfortable.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Josh. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Steve?
If I could make one more comment, I guess I wanted to thank our investigative journalist, independent investigative journalist Josh Wolski for raising this issue. I think within limits, I would support his thrust. I also wanted to publicly recognize him for his efforts to, as a muckraker, and also that of Rob Port, who's the other, I guess he's affiliated, somewhat independent investigative journalist in town. I note there's another member of the fourth estate in our audience, and I want to publicly commend her on her objectivity and thoroughness, but unfortunately, because of corporate directions, the Minot Daily and the two television stations have, in my opinion, not been able to do the kind of investigative and reporting journalism that I think they've done in the past and probably would like to do. And I guess do it with the corporate ownership of public media. But at least we have these two individuals, Josh Wolski and Rob Port, who want to dig and ask tough questions, and I respect them very much for that. And I think they serve a very valuable purpose for our city and our society. So I appreciate that. It may cause us some tension and some anxiety at times, but I think they're doing their job on behalf of a free society, so I appreciate it.
Seeing no further comments, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Erlingame?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item 7.6, the driveway appeal. At this time, there was a, if I remember, Steph, there was a decision. This is, the decision was, I mean, at a staff level?
Yes, yep, there was a decision. I see City Engineer Lance Meyer, he knows more information about this particular matter than me. But the matter before the council is an appeal from their decision on, to not permit an expansion of a citizen's driveway, an extra 10 feet to accommodate access to a garage. I believe our PIO has a copy of the exhibit that she can put on display for you so you can kind of get a visual of the driveway that we're speaking about and the specific request that's being made.
So at this time, do we need to move further on debate and discussion? Do we need a motion, a second, then discussion before we turn the microphone over to?
You can proceed with a motion and a second first.
Okay. We will, first I'll entertain a motion. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark?
I move that we uphold the recommendation of staff and grant permit.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion at this time. Mr. Meyer, the microphone is yours for some background.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Mr. Ellingson is with us tonight, and after I'm done presenting, I think he wants to come up and state his case to you. Within our city ordinance, section 28-211, it limits residential driveways to 30 feet in width. However, section 28-212 does allow driveways up to the width of your garage doors, but then caps that at a maximum of 40 feet in width. So if you have a three-stall garage, you can essentially be up to about 40 feet in width. The current driveway that Mr. Ellingson has is 39 feet in width. He's asking for an additional 10 feet in width, which is beyond the 40 feet maximum that we as city staff can allow. There is an appeal provision within our ordinance that allows him to come and state his case to you tonight. You can grant basically a special permit, and that is what is before you tonight. So if you grant the special permit, that allows him to hire a licensed contractor, and he can come on, come in and build the driveway to the width that he is requesting, which would allow for a 49-foot driveway. Staff is not recommending that width, and essentially it's for a couple of reasons. One, that is, that's a really wide driveway. That'd be right on par with probably something you'd see in an industrial zone. And we're trying to keep those driveway widths to something that's more manageable in a residential area. Consistency is important, and something that fits in with the rest of the neighborhood. So those are the reasons why we're recommending denial. It's not something that we're going to die on the hill for here. Typically, you'll see recommendations to deny driveways like this come from us. It's more location-based. So in my career here at the city, I've had two appeals. This would be the second one. The first one, it's really been location, and we're trying to limit driveways in certain locations, usually based on safety or because they're on an arterial. This would be the first width one that we've had come before you. So for your information, I provide that. It's really up to you whether you want to allow this or not, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about this because that actually affected my across-the-street neighbor several years ago, and what I've seen in walking through the community is that it may not so much be the garage, but it may be people wanting a slightly wider driveway to accommodate a boat or a camper or something they store next to their house. I mean, I think that's quite a common occurrence. And when I drive and walk up and down the streets, I see a lot of people spending a lot of time and energy trying to back up a trailer with a boat on it, or a large motor home. And they have a paved pad or a solid impervious surface pad next to their house, and it sounds like, it looks like it should make life a lot easier for them if they had a little bit wider driveway to maneuver on. In the case of my neighbor, the city dug up the street because of a broken water main, and the city paid for new paving, and I believe part of his, the driveway, part of his driveway they had to tear up. He wanted like a couple of feet extra, and he wasn't granted that, and it seemed like kind of an odd thing. I'm not necessarily friends with this neighbor or advocating for him, but, you know, I see people maneuvering a lot, particularly on weekends when they want to get their boats back or out on the lake. And it, I don't know, if someone, I read one of the, I think what you've said helps me understand, but one of the things in your memo was that, you know, we won't have to deal with people complaining about wide driveways and snow getting dumped at the end of their driveway. Well, if they want to enlarge their driveway, I think that's on them. I'm not going to be sympathetic to that, to that complaint. But it just, I don't know, it seems like it causes an inconvenience for a fair number of people.
And in this case, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padrigula, the homeowner does have a detached garage and does have a camper, so I think this is what's prompting the request.
Lance, what does this do for snow removal?
Well, I think if you talk to our operations folks, this is the concern they would raise when you have snow gates. The longer they have to push with gates down, the harder it's going to become. And eventually, the snow will build to a point where it'll start to spill over. So I think as long as the property owner understands that that's the trade-off, that's the issue they're going to have.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lance, does this pertain primarily to the apron? Are they allowed to extend their driveway in their, like, within, out of the right-of-way 10 feet?
They are. So in this case, it's anything in the right-of-way, that's what we're governing. But if they wanted to have a wider driveway on their private property or have a wider patio, they'd be allowed to do that up to what the zoning ordinance regulations have for the amount of impervious surface. So in this case, I think we did check that, and they would be allowed to have an additional driveway on their private side of their property.
So in a sense, in the diagram, you have, you have the markings there. We're talking about between the sidewalk and the street. Anything between the sidewalk back, and it looks like there's probably already been some driving off the side of the driveway back into the detached garage, that would be pavable. Even if the council denies this tonight, the property owner could pave between the sidewalk to the detached garage. All we're talking about is the apron between the sidewalk and the curb.
That's correct. That's what we, as a city, regulate.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Lance.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and Alderman, the answer for my clarification was your, was your motion to uphold staff's recommendation, or was it to grant the permit? I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
To uphold staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none, I think we'll have Mr. Ellingson step to the floor.
Good evening. I, coming here to propose widening my driveway. I have a detached garage. I have a 45-foot camper that I'm going to try and wrestle in there, rather than paying storage. And what I want to do is create an apron where I can get the camper in without destroying the underside of my camper and/or my box rails and my pickup going up and over a curb, which I can. I don't think that's going to be very attractive. I've heard a lot about continuity. This is the neighborhood of Hiawatha. I don't know if you're aware of what we've been doing for continuity on that street, but this whole sub-development was done without sidewalks in 60% of it. And now we have sidewalks that have been put in. And so I understand the continuity bit, but I'm also looking at the whole premise of this, and I'm going, wait a minute. I was required to have a sidewalk. I maintain it, and I always have. But yet, you go down the street, and there weren't any. And my question would be why that wasn't taken care of from the get-go? And we have a division like this, and I'm asking for a simple 10 feet. As far as the wings of the loaders and maintainers coming down, I don't care. I have a construction company. I can bring one of three payloaders any day I want and move the snow. So it doesn't concern me if they don't put the gates down. They rarely do anyway. I'm just looking for that extra 10 feet to get my camper in on my property. I'm going to extend from the existing garage 25 feet and bring it down to a smaller and maintain as much grass as I can. But I do want to get something where I put my camper there, plug it in. Right now, take it out for a trip. I've got it out of my shop. Got to load stuff up, haul it out there, load the camper, bring it back, unload the camper, haul it home. And it's a lot of, a lot of time and effort on my part. Not getting any younger. I don't like toting stuff. I'd rather drive it and back it to home, plug it in, and just leave it. So that is what I'm requesting. I will have a contractor do it, two-code, be it six inches, whatever is required. I don't care. Cost is not an issue. It's convenience, and I'm willing to pay for it. Having said that, that is all I request, an additional 10 feet to tie into the new apron that I'm going to pour, which is a full 25 feet wide or 24 feet, I guess. Bit tastefully into, narrow down to the sidewalk at about 10 feet. And I'm asking just for that 10 feet so I can come over and not tear things up. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any questions of Mr. Ellingson? Mark?
So in this, I'm sorry I didn't get to drive out to look at your place in person. But so where the property line is, or what appears to be the property line on this diagram, you know, that first black line down from the top?
Yes.
Is there, is that just open there? Is there a fence there or anything, or if you want to swing in?
There's a fence in the back of my property that's there, but that's wide open there.
Okay, okay. So you, so you're saying with the 10 feet, you could swing your way back there?
Yes.
And maybe then pull forward and?
With the length of my pickup and the camper together, when I bring it in, I would have to detach the fifth wheel, pull ahead a ways, and then have my wife stand there and open my end gate as I drove out from underneath it so I didn't tear that up because of just the angle and the proximity of my end gate would swing into my camper. I just want to have a place where I can bring it in, square it up, and call it good. I don't know if any of you have had your wife help you back up indoor. I've had a pretty good stint of marriage, and this is a good way to end it when you start getting?
Tough on the marriage, yeah.
Thank you.
Steve?
If I could partially answer Mark's question, I hoofed it around this neighborhood very carefully, and I went up to the gentleman's door, and it's a heck of a lot of concrete in his front yard. But what struck me was, and I don't think he's the only one, but he has this garage way, way off to the corner. I mean, the picture, if you look it up on Google Maps or Google Street Finder, whatever it is, you know, it's a lot of concrete, but it doesn't even come close to that one garage he has, which is built as a separate building. I personally would prefer more grass, but it's not my house.
Thank you, Steve. Steph?
And just one thing I just want to highlight that's in the memo to the council is section 28-217 is the section of the city ordinance that provides the standard of review for the council in this particular instance. So to grant this special permit on appeal, the council needs to do so in order to prevent an undue hardship. So in the event that the council wants to consider granting this special permit, they would just have to, the council would need to articulate what they believe the undue hardship is in this particular situation. Here, the recommendation from city staff is that they don't believe an undue hardship exists, so.
Scott?
Is there a definition of what an undue hardship is, or?
In this particular instance, there is not. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lance, I wasn't, I don't recall the prior driveway appeal that you've seen before, so I don't know what considerations the council considered in that instance. Oftentimes with, so there is an undue hardship analysis that exists in the city's land development code. Let me see if I can pull that up for the council really quick. Just to give you an idea of what that analysis looks like. So, Public Information Officer, I'm going to plug into DIA 7, which should share? The most common instance where you're gonna see this analysis is when someone's applying for a variance, which is very comparable to what's happening here. He's asking for a deviation from the specific rules from the ordinance. And so what I have up here before you is a section of our land development code that discusses the criteria that the planning commission needs to consider when approving a variance. And it states that a variance may not be approved unless they find there exists an undue, a unique hardship. Excuse me. And so a unique hardship is limited to one or more of the following, considering the shape of the property, does the request arise from conditions of exceptional shallowness or shape of a specific piece of property, the topography, does the request arise from exceptional topographical conditions, are there exceptional practical difficulties? Without a use of this variance or this exception to the general rule, is the use of the property not possible? So further, a variance under this code may not be approved unless the planning commission finds both the following to be affirmed, the variance does not adversely affect the rights of property owners in the surrounding neighborhood or the character of the surrounding neighborhood, and the granting of the variance is contrary to the comprehensive plan. So this particular instance, the driveway is probably a far reach from comprehensive plan analysis, but the rest of it is probably analysis that the council could take into consideration if you want to find that there is an undue hardship that exists for this particular citizen. City staff has reviewed it, and the opinion of the engineering department is that an undue hardship does not exist. So that's where the recommendation stems from.
Okay, thank you, Steph. Scott, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to kind of follow up with that, because looking at the definition of, and maybe I'm trying to find a definition to make this work, and if I am, I apologize, but the exceptional practical difficulties and hearing the, you know, obviously, use of the property, intended use of the property as for storage of a camper, within that, does that qualify? I mean, to me, that qualifies as practically pretty difficult to do what we just heard. Am I wrong in my assessment of that?
Harold?
So typically undue hardship is something that's created by the, like it says here, the topography or the shape of the property, it's how it naturally sits or exists. So for example, if next to this driveway was an immediate change in the grade of the property, where basically it starts to slope up immediately, and so it's, that's the way the property naturally lays or how it's graded, and so it's unrealistic to be able to level that out and then put in the driveway in conformance with the city ordinances. And typically, however, the hardship is not created through construction by the property owner, right? So the choice of building a detached garage in accordance with the ordinances does not create an undue hardship. That's a self-created issue at the decision of the property owner. Usually undue hardship, again, goes back to the topography of the land or something that reasonably would not allow you to do what they would otherwise be able to do because of the costs associated with clearing out grading and those kinds of things that naturally sits there, if that helps. And I say that because there's potentially some other issues that may come forward to the council where this undue hardship may be, that the hardship is created more with the decision of how and where to construct and not necessarily the topography of the property.
Steph?
And to build off of what Harold is stating too, if, when you do approve a variance for something, that's something that could apply to many different properties, the consideration really should be for the council is, you need to treat every similarly situated people all the same. So if somebody comes with the same mirror situation and asks for an expansion of their driveway, it would be a far cry to allow for a variance in one instance and not in another with substantially similar facts. So if this is something that the council's considering allowing, then I guess my recommendation would be to consider the driveway requirements as a whole, and whether or not all of the driveways should be allowed that extra ten feet. And as engineering indicated, the reason why they have it set a certain way is for, there's a reason for it, there's aesthetics, snow removal, things of that particular nature. So the recommendation is that it be denied to uphold our existing ordinances.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a, Steve?
Thank you, Tom. I don't want to belabor what's probably for most people a fairly trivial issue, but it brings back a vote I took very early in my tenure on the council that I've agonized over and had real big regrets about since. It was the issue of whether people would be allowed to plant trees on their own within the berm, and I ended up voting to follow the staff recommendation, require a permit, and I've had second thoughts about that for twenty years. I normally trust the judgment of our staff, and there was a good case to be made to make sure that the tree wouldn't encroach and et cetera, et cetera. But at some point, it seems kind of bizarre that we don't allow a citizen to plant a tree on what is city property, but in front of their house. And it seems strange to me that we don't give a guy who has a very expensive house, who built his garage, the chance to make it a little bit easier, make life a little bit easier by being able to maneuver his boat in. I also felt fairly awkward when my across-the-street neighbor brought this up. He asked me if there was some issue about how wide the driveway could be, and I said, sure, he wanted like two feet. And I, you know, I said, I don't think there'd be any problem. Well, there was a problem, he wasn't allowed to do that. And I felt like an idiot, you know, having to defend the city's point of view. For two feet, it seemed fairly trivial in the broader scheme of things, it would have made his life a lot easier, and that it just didn't, wasn't allowable, and he didn't end up appealing it. But, I mean, at some point, you know, although I think there is a logic to it and a rationale, it just kind of flies in the face of common sense, at least in terms of my way of looking at this thing. You know, if he's not gonna complain that we don't plow the full fifty feet, you know, it's good enough for me. If he only does twenty feet plowed, then I'm fine with that, and he's fine with it. But it just seems like we're being too intrusive into how people use their land and their property. And again, I feel badly, probably voting against what the staff recommends, because I think there are good reasons for that, and I generally support our staff, because we need to have policies that are consistent and followed. But at some point, it just doesn't sit right, and I still remember that tree from twenty years ago, and I wish I could take back my vote.
Anything else? Yes, Harold?
Just in response to the snow removal question, and I have no reason to doubt the gentleman here, that that's not an issue for him, but the city's gonna be clearing snow off of that property for much longer than he's probably likely to own that property. And so while that may not be an issue for the current property owner, that's not to say that it's not a, that staff isn't pressured in the future that, hey, I have a fifty-foot driveway, you're not cleaning my whole driveway like you are everyone else, and they won't be here to have the memory of what the gentleman here is committing to tonight. So I think there's an issue with consistency, generational consistency here. And again, I don't doubt his proposal, that he's fine taking care of it now, but that doesn't mean that the next property owner won't be as amenable.
Good point. Steph, forward.
Well, first of all, I'll probably die in that house. That's my intent, anyway. Secondly, I can put any kind of stipulation I want if there is a property sale, that this is something that will be done, or nullifies the sale. Thirdly, it's probably gonna be my son, who owns a part of my construction company, and I'm sure generations is kind of the hope, that we leave a legacy, and his kids, his kids can continue on doing this. So it's an asset, the way I see it, and it's one I want to keep in the family, and I don't see it being sold. I do appreciate your comments. I didn't build the house. I bought it, and I would have probably done some things differently at that point. I would have attached it and done a different little bit of offsets, I would have had the house probably back another fifty feet. That horse is out of the barn right now, and I can't get it back in. I pay a significant amount of property tax there. I'm asking for a little relief to make my life easier, to make it functional, to make it functional. I pour the concrete on the other side. Like I said, it's a matter of getting under and out and not destroying things. And I really don't want to collapse the bedside of my pickup, and I doubt the neighbors, as I said, will want to see ruts from a twelve-thousand-pound truck and a seventeen-thousand-pound camper going over on the grass and collapsing it. That's gonna look pretty damn ugly, too. Thank you.
Anything further? We do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a recommendation, because I know that every once in a while we'll run into issues like this, and it sounds like staff has likely looked at this in detail, but maybe it's something that needs a little more review. I know that there are times that there are planning ordinances that can be changed or rewritten, and so if staff could find some time to look at it again, and maybe it's something that we could consider at a later time. I think our hands are tied this evening with the way that the ordinances are written, but maybe it's something that needs a relook.
Any further debate? Seeing none, we have a motion to hold the recommendation from staff, and a second. Please call the roll.
Janzer.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitner.
Yes.
Padraig Gula.
No.
Ross.
Yes.
Burlingame.
No.
Motion passes.
Moving on to, on the agenda, moving on to item seven point seven, approved time extension for application for F.I. nine. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Who is that? We have a motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Burlingame.
Yes.
Janzer.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitner.
Stain.
Padraig Gula.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item eight on the agenda, that is our personal appearances. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward and address the council. I would ask that you, out of respect for other speakers that may want to address the council, to limit your comments to five minutes. Now is your opportunity to step forward. Second call. Seeing none, we will move on to item nine, miscellaneous and discussion items. Are there any other items to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to item ten on the agenda, liaison reports. We'll start with Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one committee that met was the Outcall Ordinance Review and Rewrite Committee. Thought we had a productive meeting, gave direction to our outside council that was approved by this board to move in a very specified and narrow scope of work to move that committee's work forward, and we will reconvene when we have some, something presented by that outside council, so.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've not had a liaison committee meeting, and the MPO board will meet yet this month, so no further report.
Scott?
I've got nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Lisa?
On May twenty-second, I attended the D C B Policy Board meeting, so this is a new board that has been created with our C T E that is soon to open. That board will meet a couple of times a year, and just have some options thrown out to them about the running and the programs at the new C T E. And at that point, we also learned that the ribbon cutting for the new C T E will be on July nineteenth, so hopefully everyone can be there for that. May twenty-third, went to the MPO meeting. This was the first meeting that John Van Dyke was our executive director, so it's nice to have him in place, and tomorrow, Service Base and Planning Council Executive Board meets.
Steve?
Actually have quite a bit, unfortunately. First of all, although it's not a formal liaison responsibility, I think one of the responsibilities we have on the council is to monitor the work of our staff. And something happened on Friday, the seventh of June, while I was driving home at eight-thirty in the evening, I saw a city truck with flashing lights on Fifteenth Street Northwest, and one of our workers standing there, and I pulled over to investigate. It struck me as being kind of a late time to work, past your normal eight-to-five workday, and I wondered if there was some emergency or problem. Well, it turned out that it was one of our water department people, Rob Semino, who was the lead utility operator, and he had a big wrench in the street, there was a hole in the street, and he was pumping water. So I asked him what was happening, and Mr. Semino very nicely explained that there was a construction project farther up the street, and that water had to be shut off for the residents of the street, and he was working late that night to make sure that water would be restored, water service. He had to flush the pipe out and do various other things, and they had to do some pressure testing and things, and I was really impressed that he was working so hard and so late. He encouraged me to go up the street to see the project itself, and there I found Ben Koffel, one of our project engineers for Public Works Department, and he was sitting there guiding and supervising the people from Dig It Up Backhoe, who were the contractors. They were putting in a storm sewer drain, and they had to tear up the street and install and work around all these other lines. And I was really impressed by the fact that these two employees of ours were working past normal hours and making sure that the citizens of the city were getting their money's worth out of this contract. And I wish the people who sometimes complain about how there's all this wasteful spending would notice when city employees work way beyond normal hours and beyond normal requirements or expectations, and contribute, I think, a lot of value to what the citizens get from their tax dollars. And I wanted to publicly commend Ben and Rob for working so hard, working late, and also taking the time to explain very carefully to me what they were doing and why they were doing it. At the end of it, there was a little humorous situation where the property owner came out and said that his young child had just used the toilet and was asking if it could be flushed, and at that point, I guess enough of the water was connected where they could flush the toilet, I'm not sure they could wash their hands, but they could at least flush the toilet. If you ever had a youngster who needs to go to the bathroom, that is quite an emergency to them. So I really appreciate the fact that our staff worked long hours and worked hard under difficult conditions to get the water going in that street. And in my experience, that's been the typical situation when I've stopped and looked and explored with city staff what they're doing in seemingly strange kinds of circumstances. So I really appreciate what Ben and Rob were doing, and again, beyond the normal call of duty to make life easier for citizens. Second thing I wanted to point out is the Commission on Aging, which I represent, is having their monthly meeting this Friday, so I'm not able to report on anything that's happened since then. The nine, excuse me, the, that's right, the Emergency Resource Council did have a meeting this past, or two Mondays ago, I guess, and the Highway Patrol presented on their capabilities when it comes to an emergency response team, which they have twenty-five officers assigned to throughout the state to respond to emergencies, particularly lost people. And they have three bloodhounds and an airplane and several drones to conduct searches and help local law enforcement out. It was really impressive, their capabilities and their ability to mobilize resources to save people, maybe an elderly person with dementia that's wandered off, or a lost child or a criminal that's trying to escape. They even said that they at times had flown the dog out so he'd be available to find somebody. I think that's pretty resourceful. But the point I want to make here is that there are things the state does that really support us tremendously at the local level, and a lot of these are humanitarian kinds of things, like lost children and lost elders, and I came away with a renewed appreciation for the Highway Patrol, so that was good to hear. On the negative side, I'm also a representative to the nine-one-one committee, and one of the things we've been struggling with is the change to a state radio system that would include everybody and provide encryption and better coverage throughout the state for emergency services. And one of the things I learned to my amazement was that the system will cost ten million dollars a year to repair, and apparently they've only been able to find funds for about five million dollars of this cost. The legislature set this up, made all sorts of promises, I think promises probably made to the legislature that the contractors couldn't keep, and now the counties basically, and our citizens are paying taxes for, or fees on their phone bills for the service. It sounds like when they get it going, finally, hopefully they will get it going. It's been delayed, of course, repeatedly, that there is no plan for who will actually run it. Right now, it's operated by state I T. That's kind of strange, you'd think that would be a disaster emergency services kind of function, but anyway. And there is no money allocated to operate the system, so hopefully that won't fall back on us at the municipal level or the county level. But again, I think a pretty appalling kind of situation. The intent was good, but the follow-through wasn't there, and I think this kind of thing happens from time to time, and I... And I think this kind of thing happens from time to time, and I think citizens and local government bodies need to be aware of that and lobby for more effective programming and operations at that level. I think those are the only committees that I represent the council on, and again, just wanted to single out two individuals out of many who work hard for the city. And I appreciate the time they took to explain what they did and why they were doing it. I'm sure the little boy in the house appreciated the chance to be able to flush his toilet. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of personal privilege, there's an outside chance that I will miss the next meeting. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the aldermen that are at the DIA with us on their service, and it was an honor serving with you, and I look forward to working with the next council. So just wanted to make sure I had an opportunity to say that while they're here and in this setting. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And my liaison report was included in the mayor's report. So with that, we will move on to item number 11 on the agenda. That's adjournment. Is there a motion? Motion by Paul, second.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Good meeting.